My name is councillor Martin Hill, leader of the County Council and chairman of the executive committee. So, welcome everybody to this first meeting of the new council for the next, first executive meeting of the new council which will be for the next four years. And welcome, of course, to the first in-person meeting we've had for over a year now in terms of the executive. So, we are here in the council chamber at Lincoln socially distanced and we'll proceed on the business. We're also streaming it and there will also be contributions on screen from, well, this morning from the Director of Public Health for his report. So, without further ado, I'll move forward and ask for apologies for absence, please.
Thank you, Leader. We have apologies from councillor Davies.
Any others? I'm not seeing any, so we'll move forward then. So, then we go on to item two, which is declaration of interest from any councillor. Has anybody got any interests to declare? Please now indicate. I'm not seeing anything, so there are no interests to declare. So, we'll then move quickly on to item three, which is the announcements. Obviously, I will be discussing the vision under item nine, but again, just to welcome everybody and we look forward to a productive four years on behalf of the residents of Lincolnshire. So, with that, I'll move on then to item four, which are the minutes of the meeting held of this executive, which was held on the 7th of April of the old executive. Is it, is everybody happy that I sign this as a true and accurate record of those people who were here? Is that agreed for those who were present? Thank you. I would also like to welcome the four new members of the executive today. This is their first meeting. We have, who've joined us since the election. So, that's councillors Corey, councillor Petroyd, councillor McNally and councillor Bocket. So, welcome to all of you and I'm sure we will enjoy working with you over the next four years and hopefully they'll be as successful as the previous. Okay, then, I'm going to move on to item five then, which is the Covid-19 update. So, we receive a report from the Director of Public Health, Derek, I think it's Derek, who will be on the screen, hopefully. So, hi Derek. So, just to explain to everybody, we can see you, you can hear us but you can't see us, but, so, thank you very much. So, if you'd like you to introduce your report, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Hill. Good morning, everybody. What I'll do, I won't go through the reports as you've got it because the numbers change daily, so I'll give you an update as of this morning where we are, cover a little bit about the new variants and also a little bit about hospital rates because I think they'll be a key point, and then happy to take questions. So, as of this morning, on the publicly available government website, the England rate for Covid-19 infections overall is just under 29 per 100,000 population and the Lincolnshire rate is 19.4. So, we're actually quite a bit below the England rate at the moment. The reason the England rate's gone up is clearly the Indian variants or the Delta variants, as the WHO are now calling it. We're seeing a large number of cases in certain parts of the country, predominantly the North West and London. We aren't seeing that number of cases in Lincolnshire, but I'll come on to that in a minute. From our local data, which is, so that, those data I just gave you were for the seven days up until the 27th. We've got a little bit more up-to-date data ourselves. So, the seven days up until the 30th, our rate is actually slightly lower, so we were 16.7, so about 17 per 100,000. What that means in Lincolnshire is over the seven days up until the 30th, we had about 130 new cases of Covid-19 across the entire county. And bearing in mind, we have a population of three-quarters of a million people, so relatively small number. The vast majority of those cases are in our working age adults, as you would expect, our younger working age adults who have not yet been called for a vaccine. We did see a bit of an increase in our secondary school aged children cases, as we expected, bearing in mind it was two weeks after the step three of the government's roadmap on 17th of May. But half-term has provided us with a little bit of a break in that, so those rates are coming back down as well. But they were always well below 100 cases in a week and nothing that was concerning me. So, that's the overall picture in terms of the numbers, as I'm sure everybody's aware, yesterday was the first day that the UK didn't record a Covid death, which was obviously a really positive news story. We have not had any deaths from Covid-19 over the past week and the week before. In terms of Covid deaths being mentioned on the death certificate, there were two, but those data are going to be updated today, so I'd expect that to go down again. So, what that's telling us is that whilst we will continue to have some level of infection, we seem to have done a pretty good job of breaking the link between infection and subsequent hospital admission and therefore onward sadly people dying from Covid if they're based in hospital. And that's reflected in the fact that as of the national sick rep for the NHS this morning, there were two people in United Lincolnshire Hospital with Covid-19, neither of whom were on ventilators or in intensive care. So, again, that numbers come right down. Compare that to, for example, Nottingham University Hospitals, there's 23 cases and that's because Nottingham are seeing a lot more cases of the Delta or Indian variants at the moment. I'll just say a little bit about that particular variant and then I'll pause and take questions if anybody's got any. The data is still not perfectly clear on that particular variant. What we're seeing in our patch across Lincolnshire in the last two weeks of May, we saw about 300-something cases overall. Of that number, about a third, so about 100, were sent for sequencing and they need to be sequenced for us to be able to detect which variant those cases are. So, about a third were sent for sequencing and of that third, of that roughly 100, about one in five were the Indian variants. So, about 20 cases over those two weeks were the Indian variants. The rest of them, I think, with a few very small exceptions, were the Kent variants or the Alpha variants, as it's now known. So, we are seeing the Indian variant starting to come forwards with more cases, but if you compare that proportion, a fifth of our typed cases were the Indian variant. With someone like Leicester, where 90% of their typed cases were the Indian variants. You can see the wood behind the curve there. I do expect that the Indian variant will become the dominant variant, so the Delta variant will become the dominant variant in Lincolnshire. It could be a matter of a couple of weeks before that happens. It could be a month, six weeks or a bit longer. The key question is, does it drive more severe illness and therefore more hospital admissions? And at the moment, we're not seeing that and I don't think that's the case. But the messages remain the same. So, it's hands-based space and fresh air and it's if you are offered the vaccine, please make sure you take up the vaccine straight away and you get your first and your second dose as soon as you're around. I'll pause there, Leader, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that, Derek. So, I'll ask for questions, anybody or comments, please. Not seeing any at the moment. I mean, Derek, I suppose the question I've got is, in terms of people presenting with more serious issues of coronavirus, what sort of the correlation between people who've had one vaccine and two vaccines and what's the sort of local and national evidence on what's happening there?
So, there is some early evidence that the Delta variants, the Indian variants, is not quite as affected by vaccine for one dose. So, what, it's very early days and obviously the research will develop, but it looks like one dose of vaccine will give you maybe 60% immunity to the Kent variant, the Alpha variant, and maybe 30 to 40% immunity to the Indian Delta variants. So, what we are seeing in other parts of the country, not in Lincolnshire, as I said, we've only got two cases, is that some of the admissions are in people who have had one dose, but the majority of admissions to hospital are in people who've had zero doses because they're in a younger age band in those places. It looks like two doses, certainly a couple of weeks after you've had your second dose, is very effective against all variants, including the Alpha and the Delta. And I think there might only be one or two cases across the country where somebody's ended up in hospital with two doses. But to remember that even if you have both doses of your vaccine and you're a couple of weeks in, so your immune response has got to its height, no vaccine is 100% effective, so there is still a risk. So, we can't forget the hands-based space and fresh air message, but it does look like, very much it looks like, that we are breaking the chains of transmission. And on that, roughly in Lincolnshire, we are now at, let me just double-check my numbers, about three-quarters of the eligible population in Lincolnshire have had one dose and a little more than 50%, about 51% of the eligible population have had two doses, which is really good news and should help us keep the rates down.
Thank you. And I'm not going to press you on what sort of decision, just remind us on the timescale of government decision leading up to the 21st of June?
So, from the conversations nationally, I understand that towards the end of this week, over the weekend and the beginning of next week, there is an expectation that the data will be clear enough for the chief medical officers to make a recommendation to the Prime Minister about step four. So, I would expect by the end of next week, there'll be clear, a clear view in government about whether we'll proceed to step four on the 21st. Obviously, it's a national decision. It's a very different pattern across the country, I think, is the key point on this, councillor Hill. Some places are seeing an increasing cases and a small increase in hospitalisations, but nothing like wave one or wave two. Other places, fortunately, we are one of those other places in Lincolnshire, we're actually continuing to see a downward slope. So, I think that's why it's quite a difficult decision at this stage.
Thank you very much. So, unless anybody else wishes to contribute, I'll finish there and thank you very much for that report, Derek. Thank you. Very good. Okay, then, so that's that one doubtless. I'll move on to the, excuse me, the next item, which is developments with the Usher Gallery, et cetera. So, Nicole, I think you are going, this has been a long-running saga, some years now, where we are quite very keen to actually upgrade the offer, certainly the Usher and indeed the collection building. And there's been a long saga and negotiations with various partners. So, I think Nicole would give us an update so we can give some views on how we think it's going. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. This obviously is also in the context of the post-Covid recovery for the cultural sector, which I think nationally is going, is being recognised as quite a challenging environment for all organisations. So, there are a number of actions or activities that are running in parallel in the cultural sector in Lincolnshire. The first one is a decision that needs to be made by the City of Lincoln with regards to the future of their collections and the collections management agreement. So, these are the collections of artefacts and art that are in the ownership of the City of Lincoln and are currently managed by Lincolnshire County Council under a collections management agreement that comes to an end in October of this year. So, by the 1st of July, Lincolnshire County Council will need a decision by the city as to what the future plan is for those collections. We previously have been notified by the city that they were intending for those collections to be moved to Nottinghamshire. So, for the last 12 months, council officers have been working diligently to sort and separate those collections in readiness for whatever that next stage will be. We remain open to a renewed collections management agreement with the city. We've proposed one that is on a commercial rate, but just to be clear, that would be a cost recovery, so there would be no income generation in that. It would simply cover the costs of the staff and the storage involved. But it is one that would be more reflective of 21st century model. So, we, the collections management agreement that we currently have, has broadly been in place since 1974 and never undergone any radical updates. And the sector has moved on, so we need to reflect that. And we're looking for an agreement that would give us greater flexibility with regards to the way in which we collect and the stories that we tell. And we would also be looking for an update in the terms of that agreement, so a shorter agreement in place, potentially a 10-year model, and then also opportunities that we can seek with regards to our collections. So, as in the opening statement, the impact of Covid-19 on the sector after a year when almost exclusively our sites have been closed is a concern to us. We're unclear as to the way in which the public will return to our sites, in what numbers and what they will expect to see when they do return. So, whilst our recovery plan is cautiously optimistic, it's such early days that it's yet to be tested. So, in the initial stages at least, this will involve a reduced opening hours at all of our sites and this is being reflected again nationally with other organisations such as the big nationals. With regards to the Usher Gallery, what we are looking to do is broaden its use, broaden its appeal and broaden the audiences that are utilising and enjoying that gallery. We want to have a combination of income generating activity that appeals to new audiences, third-party hire, education, lectures, walks and tours and children's activities. And we are looking also to continue with the wedding ceremonies of which the site is already licensed for. The Usher Gallery in the initial stages will only be opened three days a week to the public as an art gallery, but outside of those times, mindful of being culturally sensitive to it being an art gallery and the purpose of it, it will be available to the public for private hire or specified activities. In support, in conversations with our stakeholders, this also does appear to have broad support where there is an acknowledgement that in order for a sustainable business model in the Usher Art Gallery and a broadened audience enjoyment, new activity has to take place in that side. Our next steps are that we do intend to meet with the City of Lincoln and that will involve a conversation to try and seek clarity over the future decision of the collections, a joint conversation about the purpose and use of the Usher Gallery and the activity that can go on there. And then also, it is our intention to have a conversation with the city about the current lease arrangements that are in place with that gallery, with a view of that becoming again more flexible, more beneficial for the way in which we can utilise that gallery and hopefully bring that in line with a new collections management agreement.
Thank you, Nicola. Councillor Corey as the portfolio holder.
Thank you, Leader. And thank you Nicole and her team, notably Will Mason, for working so hard on this. And I also want to pay thanks to my predecessor Nick Worth for all his hard work and guidance. This has been, as the Leader said, a very long and difficult process and we've tried to be accommodating and responsive and reflective on the concerns of our partners at the City of Lincoln Council. And I think this report provides a positive and accommodating solution for the Usher Gallery that satisfies the financial needs and strategic aims of the County Council and answers the concerns expressed by the City Council for the future of the Usher Gallery. And I think it also meets the needs of our publics and our wider cultural stakeholders. I think this report provides a sustainable, workable model to deliver cultural and heritage services at the Usher and the collection well into the future. And I think this report does that very clearly and very well and very sustainably and I'm happy to support it and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So, I suppose the, what I would like to explore this morning is the view, as has been said by councillor Corey and Nicole Hilton, as we are trying to get to a situation where we can enter a better phase in terms of working and upgrading the Usher Gallery because frankly, the visitor numbers are very low, which, and I think everybody I've spoken to agrees, that there does need to be improvements to particularly the Usher Gallery to make it a more attractive offer and more relevant to the 21st century. So, unfortunately, there is a bit of a standoff and it is the last, it is the last, about five to midnight on the decision scale because in terms of, to remind me, when is the, because we have said, we've given the deadline to the City of Lincoln, haven't we, in terms of when, if there is no agreement, they will have to make their own arrangements. Can you just remind us what that is, please, Nicole?
So, we've asked the city to give us a decision as to what their future intention is with regards to the collection by the 1st of July and the actual collections management agreement comes to an end at the end of October, which would essentially leave the responsibility entirely with the city for those collections that we currently care for and accommodate.
Thank you. So, I think our view, to hear the two, has been that we have a plan and it does require more flexibility from the City of Lincoln as the owner of the building. We are always very committed to maintaining the building as we have done for many years now, since 1974, which we will always continue to do. And we are committed to being supportive and actually look after their, not only the Usher collection but also their archives as well. But it will require some flexibility and if they feel that the flexibility isn't something they're willing to give us, then I'm very happy for them to make their own arrangements and look after the, those collections as they think fits. Having said that, you know, rumours that they are going to transport the collections off to Nottingham would not be in our favour, but they are their collections at the end of the day. And it does seem to me that there is an eminently easy solution to all of this, which will suit all parties and whatever we do, if we carry on looking after stuff within the Usher Gallery, it will be within the, within the bounds of the Usher Trust and also will be based around an art gallery. So, I'm a little bit mystified personally, I've had lots of meetings over this and chief executive as well, that why we can't seem to get a sensible solution. But a decision will have to be made, but I'm very interested in other members of the executive, what their view is in terms of if there is no flexibility or reasonable flexibility shown by the owner of the building, you know, I don't think I'm personally prepared to carry on having something there which is basically not delivering for what it should be doing and is becoming a bit of a maldium. So, views, please, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, I agree that I think any of our public buildings, whether it's the castle or our libraries or museums, need to be offering something that our residents want to go and see and visitors want to go and see. And to be honest, you know, we know that you've got to continually think about that visitor market who's coming in there. Now, the Usher's a beautiful building, it sits very prominently as you go up the hill. And I just do think that, you know, in this day and age, is about providing what the public want. It sits right next to the collection, which again, you know, has had some fantastic exhibitions coming from all across the country. So, you know, for me, I can't understand why we are in a position where we're not moving anywhere and I honestly do believe that, you know, that building could offer something that could actually complement the collection. It could complement what the castle has to offer. And we've always talked about this trail, haven't we? And yet, you know, the Usher's really probably sat a little bit outside that. So, I think it could be quite exciting, but actually we do need the City Council to work alongside with us. Obviously, James Usher Collection was left to the city, but to be honest, you know, if you think about schoolchildren in that, in that collection, I know it's never really put out for people to see, but there's so much history and I think it's a great shame that we seem to have been talking about this for so long and we're not getting anywhere. And I agree with the Leader that, you know, we can't continue to carry on like this, can we, really?
Thank you, councillor Woolley. Thank you, Leader. And very much in a similar vein to councillor Bradwell, I think for me, the perception, I really welcome this paper, I think there's the flexibility there for us to find a way that we can, we can all work together. And also from the public's point of view, I know you've mentioned that it is only a rumour, but it does seem strange to me, so I'm sure it will do to the general public, that there's the possibility that Lincolnshire artefacts might have to go out of Lincolnshire and, you know, what opportunity will we have to bring them back in a timely manner? So, I really, really do hope that a solution, a sensible solution can be found. Thank you.
Thanks, Leader. And more of the same, really. I think before Covid, we'd already discussed many times the need for this to change, you know, the way the public consume art and culture was already changing and we recognise that and that's why we brought forward the original proposals. I welcome the effort by officers to find a further solution through this paper. I think it feels like one-way traffic to me and I think we really do need the city to take a decision. I agree with councillor Woolley that the loss of artefacts bequeathed to the city in trust to be displayed in the city going to another place outside of Lincolnshire would be a serious loss and probably a mistake, I think. It is important to recognise that the cultural offer of a place is incredibly important to the economic performance of that place. So, it is vital that we come to an agreement, but, you know, we seem to be the people trying to find the agreement. We need others to come to the table and deliver that agreement now. And I think the deadline is the deadline and we need to stick to that and hopefully the city will see that we have been flexible, we have been accommodating, we have tried to find the right solution for everyone concerned and I hope we can find a resolution in the next few weeks to this matter based on this paper. Thanks, Leader.
Thank you for that. Are there any further contribute? Yes, I've got councillor Petroyd.
Thank you, Leader. I'd sort of mirror what everyone said first. I think the art, the watches and the clocks within the building are first-rate and they're here for the people of Lincolnshire. However, the Usher needs to, you know, meet its running costs. It needs to look after itself as a destination, so pretty much like the castle is doing now. And I think that model should be, should be put forward, you know, and hopefully we can all work together to get a solution because I don't think walking away, although that might be what we have to do, is, you know, is really the best interest of the people of Lincolnshire, really. But I think the decision's sort of in other people's hands at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you for that. No further. So, I think that's pretty clear and yes, I mean, there has been some discussion, some confusion, I think, from certainly other partners in what the main driver of this is. And it all started some years ago when we had our vision for many years, three, three years ago at least, where we had a vision to actually upgrade the whole of the culture offer. And there was a challenge put down to our heritage services about, and as councillor Petroyd says... Petroyd says, actually being self-sufficient. And that's not necessarily about the financial aspect, it's about encouraging them, persuading them to actually put an offer on which people actually want to go and see. And the massive success of the castle, which, you know, what's happened there has been, is a great example of what should happen elsewhere with our assets. And we cannot just go on as we are, leaving things sort of gradually just sitting there and fewer and fewer people going and embarrassing the few people going as well. I should add also as well, just so everybody's aware, that I have been in correspondence with the Usher Trust and they are also very keen for something we don't, and they're being very flexible. Have a new chairman now and they are prepared to offer moral and some financial support as well. So again, they are keen to come to a resolution. So I do hope that we do get to the end of the day where, you know, things can move forward and we come with an arrangement which respects the wishes of Frank Usher, respects the desire to keep primarily the art gallery at the Usher Gallery, but also enables things to move forward in a better way so that it can be part of a much better picture for the heritage of Lincolnshire. So I think this is a report for noting, I believe, isn't it? I think so, that's the recommendation. So I think we've got a pretty clear steer there that that's where we feel we need to get to. And hopefully within the next few days, because time is running out now, that we can get a final decision. If the City of Lincoln have already made a decision, well, at least we know where we stand. But we do need to be clear that if there is some hope for a final resolution, that will be very helpful. Okay, well, thank you for that, Nicole. So with that, I'll move on to the next item, which I believe is, again, Nicole will be presenting that, which is the issue about the household waste recycling centres. And I'll do it better this time, so I'll just ask councillor McNally to introduce it and then Nicole will just give us the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Obviously, there's been numerous complaints and people complaining about the booking system throughout, shall we say, on the doorstep through the election process. We've been away, produced the paper, basically get everyone's sort of opinions on what's the best way forward. And then we go back and look at the decision that you come to. And Nicole, one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, obviously, I think, as you said, and certainly during the election campaign, it was an issue raised. And there is this perceived thought that extra fly tipping has been caused because of it. Whether that's, we can explore that as part of this discussion. And I think, again, it's not a decision for us today, but certainly it will be councillor McNally's decision. But I think some discussion about where we are. And Nicole, you've done a report for us which runs through some of the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. So when Covid first started in, well, this time last year, March, April last year, there was a temporary move in order to close the household waste recycling sites nationally until very clear guidance came through from central government. The expectation was that that would happen quite quickly. However, that didn't prove to be the case, realistically probably because central government were focused on fighting the pandemic. And that resulted in some ambiguous and unclear guidance sometimes coming through. So the local authority needed to make a decision itself. I think it's fair to say and it's important to note that the booking system that we did implement was only always ever intended to be a temporary situation that managed the flow of individuals through the household waste recycling centres. So rather than having them closed, as indeed some local authorities did throughout the pandemic, what we wanted to do was open them up as quickly as we possibly could, but we needed to do that in a really safe way. So we needed to manage the number of people on site at any one point. We needed to be able to manage the offtake of the waste because the further down the supply chain, there were a number of blockages because people were being furloughed and there wasn't the same volume available to us of offtakers. And also we needed to be able to protect the health and security and safety of our HWRC operators. So the household waste recycling booking system was implemented really quickly. I think we managed to actually implement it and come to an agreement with the operators within about a three-week period. So it was never going to be perfect, but it needed to meet those safety requirements. And what we did is the online platform acknowledged that it was challenging and it was limited. But what we did is throughout the lockdown period is we continued to listen to feedback and we continued to refine wherever we possibly could do within the limitations of what was quite, to be fair, a clunky platform. As the leader has noted, there were a large number of complaints and from a service that has enjoyed very, very few complaints during its history, that was quite a significant aspect for us to deal with. Many people didn't enjoy the need to book online, having had freedom previously to be able to come on sites and go as they pleased. And also, people struggled with the separated waste, so different wastes going on different days, which meant for some individuals, repeated booking and repeated visits, which they found to be kind of overly onerous. Fair to say that we did drop that requirement and that's no longer the case. So as waste volumes have increased from a curbside perspective during lockdown, it's fair to say that household waste recycling rates have decreased. So now is a good time, as lockdown is beginning to lift, for us to review whether it necessitates a booking system at all, or whether we can drop that and return to how things used to be pre-Covid pandemic. There is a lot of learning to take away from the booking system. So we've had over 500,000 people who've gone through it. Ninety-six percent of them have booked online without issue or concern. And actually, if you look at the numbers of the complaints, whilst percentage-wise it looks quite stark, the vast majority of people have reported back to us of having felt safe on site, as rushed on site. And it's also helped us alleviate some of the historical problems that we've had about long traffic queues and waste sites becoming very full very quickly, particularly on days like this, or after a bank holiday when everybody's been out in their garden. There are contractual requirements, so we will need to give notice to our HWRC operators. It's not something we can simply quickly turn on and off, but it can be activated in a sensible timeframe. But we would be needing several weeks' notification in order to take it offline, make sure our comms are clear and work with our operators to get it in place. As the leader mentioned, there does appear to be the perception that there has been a link between fly tipping, which has increased during lockdown, and the closure of the HWRCs. But to put that in context, the fly tipping across Lincolnshire has increased by less than, well, about 881 tonnes. The decrease in HWRCs is 28,000. So it's quite hard to correlate that those two are intrinsically linked. The other, add to that argument is that I'm not convinced that those people who pack their van or lorry up and drop their waste down a green lane or in a car park do so because they're frustrated because they can't get an HWRC booking appointment online. We have surplus appointments available. We're very, very rarely at capacity. So those two behaviours don't seem to be making sense. Certainly, curbsides saw a significant increase and that would suggest that people, rather than making a trip to the recycling centre, are putting things into their curbside bin and that is putting further pressure on the system. So there are some things that we do need to consider if we choose to lift the system. As I say, that it has helped us to manage the flow and manage the number of people on site, and there have been some very positive consequences. So some of the things that we might want to consider are there potentially being a pent-up or backlog of household waste recycling that would need to go and be dealt with in these centres, given the lower numbers. And that might lead to, again, queues on the highway as people try to get through in an unmanaged way into our recycling centres, of which staff will need to work very closely with operators to come up with some mitigating solutions so that we don't return to that kind of uncontrolled access. And the other aspect that we need to consider in a positive way is the issue of fly tipping. It has seen an increase. It is of concern. And the local authority, the local county council, has a role to play, working alongside our district colleagues and with the Environment Agency about pursuing those people who are inappropriately fly tipping and disposing of rubbish. One of the things that we have seen, which again is an unintended benefit of our booking system, is the inappropriate disposal of commercial waste has significantly reduced. And that is something, again, that we want to consider. Commercial operators should not be utilising our household waste recycling centres in order to dispose of builders' waste, DIY waste, tyres, et cetera, et cetera. And therefore, we wouldn't want to see a return to that. But as part of some of the literary initiative that the officers have been working on behind the seams, it does see a renewed motivation and energy to work with organisations such as the Environment Agency in ensuring that evidence is there and available for those people and ensuring a prosecution has a good degree of success, which can then lead to assets being removed of repeat offenders.
Thank you for that, Nicole. So obviously, we've been invited to give our sort of guidance, if you like, in terms of where we move forward on this. Again, not a decision for the executive, will be a decision for the portfolio holder. So yes, I think an interesting report. And just on the, certainly on the fly tipping, which was raised certainly early in the election campaign, that was a concern of many people. So we are, and I understand that we are going to look at some, as you've indicated, some issues where we can offer support and do something about the fly tipping, although it's not primarily a council issue, but we support other agencies with both helping but also enforcement as well. So I know that there'll be some papers coming to the relevant scrutiny committee to, some suggestions how we can do that, because it clearly was an issue that came forward. So views in terms of, you know, we've gone through a bit of a progress here. There are arguments either way in this, and I think you've outlined those very well in terms of keeping the booking system and not. I mean, I suppose the other issue in terms of the, you mentioned trade waste, and obviously one of the benefits of the booking system is the apparent ability to make that less easy to sort of, trade waste to sort of leach into the system. But again, I suppose the question is in terms of if we get rid of the booking system, how would we make sure that the trade waste was still mostly kept out of the system and people actually paid, the businesses paid as they're supposed to? So I don't know whether there's any views on that. Yes, councillor McNally, I think, must come in first.
Thank you, Leader. The, I think the booking system has, you know, considering it was rushed and everything else, the booking system has worked really well. Going forward, I think the booking system, we need to get back to some sort of normality and people may need to be, have the convenience to visit the sites when and as they can. But I think from a personal point of view, the permits for the vans need to stay, but maybe just tweak, you know, go back and tweak them a little bit, just to make it slightly, it's a bit, it's slightly too restricted at the minute for people who have just got a van. But I think we can tweak it and, you know, get about perfect, actually.
Thank you. So that would be vans and trailers. There's the rules, there are rules, aren't there? I'm no expert. I'm not one of those people who a treat at the weekend is going to the tip. I will use that horrid word that you hate, but which everybody else uses. But I think that would be, that we do certainly need to come up with. But your view is that it's not quite right at the moment. I know I get some complaints of allegedly people being a bit over our staff, not our staff, our contractors being a little bit heavy-handed, shall we say? So I think that's something that if we do get rid of the booking system, that's something we need to look at.
Yes, I think one of the things, I can't tell you how disappointed I am that a weekend is not spent going to the tips by you. But the, I think what we have seen is a discipline in people's behaviours. So they have been much more mindful about what they are recycling and what they are throwing away. So that's, again, some of the benefits that we wouldn't want to go backwards on. And indeed, as councillor McNally has said, simply removing the household waste recycling booking system doesn't mean that we can't mitigate against the commercial waste being inappropriately placed on our sites, because we can keep the permitting system separate. And I think that's something that we would want to consider doing.
I've got councillor Davy and councillor Woolley.
Thanks, thanks for that. Good report. I think for me, the questions are, most of the complaints I received around these issues were when we brought the system in. As we made tweaks to it, those complaints receded away. So I think the booking system settled down. I'm interested, if we were to get rid of the booking system, how many councils nationally are we aware of that would probably do the same? Or would they stick with the booking system? Bearing in mind, the report does clearly indicate there are some benefits for doing so. I'm interested, I think the issues around trade waste getting into the system are incredibly important. So I think we've got to maintain restrictions there in some shape or form. But the other point on those, I mean, knowing my own site in Skegness, prior to Covid, the queues of people waiting to get in, polluting the atmosphere, their cars running, et cetera. We haven't had those problems since the booking system was brought in. If we're to scrap the booking system, what assurances can we have? We won't go back to the way it was before. You know, the last thing we need, bearing in mind our commitment to the environment, is queues of people waiting outside HWRCs because they, we've opened it up completely. So I'm sort of flexible on this, but I'm certainly clear on trade waste. We definitely need to have those kind of permitting systems in place. And I'm guided by the portfolio holder's view, whether what needs to be tweaked, that's a portfolio decision. But I think we definitely need to have that, certainly. And I'd like to explore the booking system a little more.
So with regards to the actions of other councils, again, it's really mixed. So some of the councils that remained predominantly closed have actually implemented now a booking system. Other councils in neighbouring authorities had a booking system and now they're having a discussion like ourselves with actually getting rid of the booking system. So it's a really mixed picture. Some people are going for a hybrid model, which might be worth us considering, that might address some of the concerns you've got about returning to old behaviour, although it would be complex. And that would be having a booking system but only for peak times, for example, weekends or periods of time when we know that it's going to be really, really busy. But that would take quite a lot of planning and thought to get the public used to. There are some times when you need to book and there are some times when you don't. Not impossible, but some people are actually doing that and it does appear to be implementing quite well. For the operators themselves, they've really enjoyed the booking system because it allows them to plan their staffing in accordance with where the peak and flow is, so that they make sure on site there are more staff available when it's really, really busy. And then at times when it's not at its peak, those staff can be deployed doing other things. So it enables them So it enables them to organise themselves much, much, more effectively.
Can I just ask, I'm just interested in seeing how much behavioural shift has happened because of the booking system being brought in? We've always struggled trying to get people to recycle and, you know, telling them to put the right stuff in the right bins and dispose of things in the right way. I'm just wondering how much the changes because of Covid we brought in have created behavioural shift? And whether that's positive in the long term for us, and whether we should try and continue with that, or whether it's a temporary measure because of Covid and ending it won't really change the picture.
I think that one's quite hard to evidence at the moment, because obviously, we're not out of Covid. And I think that's where the intelligence over the next six months will really tell us as to whether there has been behavioural changes that have stuck, or whether people regress backwards. One of the things that the team are really keen on is to ensure that we take advantage of all of those behavioural changes and we continue to keep pushing it, particularly when we have other activities that are taking place that support and enhance that. So like the separated paper and card trial has touched wood in the early days, been phenomenally successful. You know, our take-up rates, our consistency, the quality of paper are all absolutely outstanding in some really difficult areas where traditionally, we've had some problems. Additionally, what we've also brought in are sampling stations across the county as well, to look at the quality, to look at contamination. So I think all of that evidence now needs to work its way through, and it's a little bit too early. There has been behavioural change, but whether it's behavioural change that's enforced because of Covid, whether people are genuinely being more mindful, and how the other activities interplay in this, I think all need to probably work themselves through in the next six months. The officer's responsibility now is to make sure that we don't take our foot off the accelerator and we keep pushing those changes through.
Thank you. I agree with councillor Davy. I live on the coast as well, and I'm really concerned about the trade. Talking to a local contractor who's actually taken trade in since Covid, his, has doubled in what he's taken. And speaking to the van owners and people who's going in, they have said that they did go to the local waste site to take their rubbish. So I'm really, I'm concerned if we go back from a booking system, that that trade waste will then go back to Skegness. And also, I mean, I've used it on the booking system, and Skegness, as anybody knows, there isn't any wetter queue. It's just on a little lane. So I don't know whether, certainly for some places, you could have a mixture, like at the weekends, you have bookings, timed bookings, and then in the week that you just have open for anybody. But certainly, the vans need to be looked at definitely, certainly on the coast. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. And the point councillor Boket's made about that flexibility around, well, maybe we could have a couple of days in the week where you don't need to book. I really do think that needs to be looked at, because particularly at this time of the year, people are doing a lot of spur of the moment. It might be spring cleaning, it might be something else. And they need to know that they can, if they've only got to wait a couple of days, that they can go without an appointment. I would really, really endorse that. On a local parochial matter, Peterborough apparently, which is close to me in the south of the county, they have been taking all sorts of stuff all the time, so I'm told. And that has caused grumbles in the south, you know, why can they do that here? Why can't they do that there? I think the other thing that I would, and it is this trade waste, that I've had examples of fly tipping that never used to happen. I think I also noticed that there are more queries on social media around man with van has, can either offer, or man with van is being asked for. And, you know, you sit there thinking, and I wonder where man with van is going to be taking that, especially if he's got to wait several days before he can load up again. And I think the one thing that I'd like to have a conversation with you, perhaps out of this meeting, is that with the previous portfolio holder, councillor Davis and I, we thought we were, well, I certainly thought I was going mad, but, and he backed it up that I was going mad. But what we found was that what councillor Paul was able to see through the system was not the same as the appointments that were available at the same tip that, say, a member of the public could see. So that councillor Davis and I could see that the slots were all full, and councillor Paul was saying, but no, they're all, most of them are empty. Now, that's obviously a bit of a tech issue, but I think that's for a meeting another day. But, you know, we've got evidence that we can show to you on that.
Yeah, I'll just come in before and let councillor, so I think there's a clear view. I mean, my own personal view is that we know that the recycling rates are really good at the households. We should be, as a council, you know, being, making services as convenient as possible. It is fair to say that there has been loads of issues with the booking system. I know, because I've been involved with it, trying to sort out some of the issues. And there does seem to be this issue that although the system says there's places, sometimes people finding that they can't book a place, for whatever reason. It has cost a lot of money to set up the booking system. It continues to cost money to provide it. So I think there is a clear issue there. My personal view is, I think we should make it convenient for people, and we shouldn't be expecting people to jump through unnecessary hoops from their perspective. Frankly, what the contractor wants to do is up to them. We're here to represent the public. I think we got a clear message from the public personally, that they wanted it back. But having said that, there are the issues of the trade waste, that needs resolving. And now there are issues of the queues, and I think I'm aware of Spalding is one of the places where it's bad. I don't, Louth, I don't know whether, and it also is seasonal. It always seems to be in the spring, again. And, you know, bluntly, the issue in why the Spalding site is so popular, because it's the lack of cooperation from the district council, who are not providing a comprehensive green waste system. So there is that issue as well. As I say, same area as councillor Woolley, I say to people, if they're complaining about queuing or going to the tip, well, just get yourself a green bin. And if people aren't prepared to pay a modest amount to get a bin to take the green waste, well, they can expect to do that. So I think there are some issues there, but my own personal view is that if we can resolve some of these other issues as well. I'm not sure having a sort of a hybrid system, booking sometimes and not booking other times, is really practical. But I'm sure it's something that councillor McNally will come into. There is a timing issue. We need some time to develop this, and we also need to make sure that the restrictions, the Covid restrictions are finally over. And we're not sure whether that will be the 21st of June or not, so, but the contractors will have to be warned. So I think there's some work to do, and I'm sure councillor McNally will be bringing some proposals to the scrutiny committee in due course. But I think our view is that with the provisos, that the booking system probably should go, but we need to look at those other issues as well. So I don't know whether, Dan, you want to say any more?
No, no, thank you, Leader. That, that's about it.
So I think that's the guidance then. So thank you very much for that, Nicole. So I think that was a reasonable debate, and just outlined some of the issues on both sides of that argument. Okay, then. So we were asked to give guidance. So the next one is for information report is the levelling up fund, or the government money, which is now we've had Brexit, how that actually comes out. So I'm going to ask councillor Davy to introduce it, and hopefully Justin Brown will be appearing on the screen any moment now. And I'm told he will be actually be able to see us. Hello, Justin. Can you actually see us?
Hello, I can see you and hear you.
Oh, right. Well, the technology has improved very quickly, so good. So I'm just going to let councillor Davy introduce the report, and then obviously you'll just run through for information where we've got to with this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Leader. I'm not going to steal Justin's thunder in terms of the main part of the report, but I'll let him do that. But I think it's just worth reminding the executive of the work we did before the election in terms of supporting the economy. I think it's true to say, we were the only council in the country that used money from our own reserves to support the local businesses who are struggling to find a way through the Covid maze. And I just want to report, I'm going to quote the figures from the report, but I think they're important. We've already paid out to 276 businesses, 2.077 million in business recovery grant. We've got 140 further businesses, which we're doing due diligence on, which are just under another million pounds. We've paid 232 businesses the first tranche of the digital voucher scheme, totaling £550,000. Eighty-four businesses have had their first tranche of their rural business grant, totaling 0.48 million. And eighteen businesses have already had their Invest for the Future submissions approved, totaling 1.235 million. So there's further work going on by Justin's team in that regard. But I think we should take enormous pride in the fact that we, as a council, and we as an executive board, have supported the Lincolnshire economy in the way we have. And it is a really, really positive indictment of the way local government should work to make sure the economy is strong going forward, only strong economies, and that enable us to support social policy in the way that we may wish. So, Justin, if you could take us through the Community Renewal Fund and Levelling Up Fund process.
Thank you, councillor Davy and councillor Hill. So as councillor Hill said, the government has identified two new funding programmes, the Community Renewal Fund and the Levelling Up Fund. And they are both short-term programmes. So Community Renewal Fund needs to be spent by the end of this financial year, 31st of March 22, and Levelling Up Fund has another three years in which to spend its funding. So short-term and part of a series of programmes that we are developing, rather than them being sort of the exclusive opportunity to invest in the economy. In terms of Community Renewal Fund, this is a revenue programme, and county councils have been asked to lead it. We've been told in Lincolnshire that we can apply for up to nine million pounds. And we've operated a bidding process involving partner organisations and indeed the county council. We received in the order of 18 million pounds worth of bids, and we are currently refining that list down in terms of which ones are the bigger priorities, which ones are the ones that are most deliverable. We have meetings during the rest of this week and early next week to refine that list before sharing with councillor Hill, on behalf of the county council's accountable body, the list that we would hope to recommend to the government. The programme's really split into skills, business, employment and place. And we have a good distribution of schemes from across the priority areas of Boston, East Lindsay and Lincoln. You'll remember that the government said that they should be priority areas for this funding, but equally, a number of schemes which operate across the whole of the county. As councillor Davy has said, we're looking to continue some of our ability to give out grants to businesses, following on from the investment that you made as an executive. We're also looking to underpin activity that supports the Green Master Plan and the recommendations from the Tourism Commission. So I'm hoping that we'll have a good, strong bid for in the order of nine million pounds. One thing I would say is that there is less money available across the country than the ceiling of every bid. So everybody's been told the maximum they could bid for, but if you add up all of the maximums, it comes to greater than the overall Community Renewal Fund. So what we're looking at is bidding for the full amount, we would recommend, but also having a Plan B if we are allocated less funding. So we're working through some tactics on that, but your advice on that would be extremely useful. In terms of Levelling Up Fund, this is a capital programme, and it's got two strands, one which is focused on places and should be led by district councils. And again, the government's priority areas are Boston, Lincoln and East Lindsay. And each of those three authorities have confirmed to us that they will be making bids. Boston around town centre enhancements, Lincoln around some city centre walking, cycling and transport improvement, and East Lindsay, cultural and cycling activity. We also know that West Lindsay District Council are going to make a bid. They're bidding for around about eight and a half million pounds for a scheme to regenerate the town of Gainsborough. In terms of the county council, we, as the highway authority, are allowed to make one transport bid. And in order to support one of our most important economic sectors, that of food manufacturing, and to start, and I stress the word start, the process of tackling some of the congestion challenges in the south-east of the county, we've developed a programme which is largely to support improvements along the A16 corridor between Boston and Spalding. So that includes junctions of the A15 on A151 at Spalding, A16B1180 at Spalding, the A16 Marsh Lane junction in Boston. And just to confirm, it's Boston, there's a typing error in the report. We are also looking and would expect to do a small amount of dueling along a section of the A16 at Curtain, and to support some active walking, cycling and potentially bus activity. The team are currently meeting, they're actually meeting at the moment, to put the fine details to the costings and to the timeline for delivering that activity. And our bid should be submitted by lunchtime on the 18th of June. So one final point, again, is that this is a funding opportunity, but it's not the only thing, which is a set of teams we are doing to support the area of Boston, the area of Spalding. So for example, we know that the Riverside industrial estate is regularly difficult to access and to leave, so we are looking at putting some funding of our own into some feasibility work on that. And we are also putting some funding into some very detailed feasibility work for the A16A52 leg of the route around Boston. So that's where we're at at the moment, councillor Hill. We're working through the detail. The final detail will become clear around about Monday next week, perhaps Tuesday. And it is our intention to bring a detailed report to you during 15th, 16th of June before our submission on the 18th. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Justin. And obviously, as you're aware, there've been two meetings now of the MPs and district leaders and interested parties to try and work through the, these bids. I think it should be emphasised also, although the government talks about them being transformational, I mean, the criteria they've then issued makes that very difficult. A, because they've zoned areas, so it's going to particular areas. So even the Gainsborough bid is a bit speculative, because it's not in what they call priority one area. But let's hope that, I think the Gainsborough bid is a strong bid and should succeed, but we'll see. And the issue is about, they're supposed to be shovel-ready and completed within two years, I believe, which, you know, in terms of transformational, it can take you two years to get the land acquired if you want to do major schemes. So we did have more ambition, shall we say, than what we ended up with. But I think we are, have been pragmatic in terms of what is actually deliverable in the timescale provided. And I think also, as you've indicated, there is a view that this is the first round of bids. And I think the good news is that, well, the interesting news is that it's gone to local government, not to the LEAP, which was an interesting factor in itself. So I don't know what that means in terms of what the government's future ideas are in terms of that. But, so I think it's an opportunity, it's a challenge for local government, but also an opportunity that if we submit credible bids, which do hopefully succeed, then that will set us in good stead for the future in terms of further bids. We did discuss at the board meeting, or whatever it was, with the MPs and et cetera, we probably needed a narrative for the whole of Greater Lincolnshire, actually, in terms of all these bids, because looked at them at face value, they are a little bit, you know, they could be described as a little bit piecemeal, although they are, in their own right, very valuable, that what is the destination? although they are in their own right very valuable, that what is the destination? What are we trying to get to in terms of Greater Lincolnshire and how that will knit together? So that when future bids come forward, civil servants and ministers can see that there is a, there's a direction of travel there and what the, the destination is. On that, we did talk about the food valley. I don't know, just explain to the executive what that sort of concept's all about, please.
Okay, thank you councillor Hill. And just to confirm, Monday afternoon, we're doing some work on the common narratives you described. In, in terms of food valley, Lincolnshire from the Humber to the Wash is the strongest producer of food in the country. And that's in terms both of growing food, but also in terms of what we call food manufacturing. So a substantial amount of the food that can be bought in restaurants, in supermarkets, et cetera, has passed through Lincolnshire, has had value added. Whether that is fish from South Bank of the Humber, whether it is prepared vegetables from the south-east of the county and plenty of others in between. Now, the food sector businesses, the LEAP, the county council, North Lincolnshire council and North East Lincolnshire council are collaborating on a programme which is called Food Valley. And it's about trying to attract as much investment from government and from business into the modernising and advanced technology within the food sector. So we're attracting robotics, we're attracting logistics management, we're looking to attract the best leaders in the sector into the county. And all of that is to really strengthen a sector which is one which Lincolnshire excels at.
Thank you for that, Justin. That, that's, I think a good description. So, yes, so I think it, it, there is, it was not a bit of a sprach catch and mackerel, but hopefully that if we, if we come up with these bids that are reasonable and acceptable, that it will set us in good stead for the future. So that's, I think, as far as we've got and we look forward to submitting them. And I think there's quite a quick turnaround, is there not, in terms of decision from government? We are led to believe?
We, we are led to believe a very quick turnaround. So yes, the ambition is to give us a response before the summer recess.
Thank you. Right, any comments, contributions, please? No, I'm not seeing any. So that's, and I know that councillor Davy is also obviously overseeing this in the detail of it, but we'll get those bids in and we'll see how it progresses. But, I mean, personally, I would have preferred, I think, total bidding, what, a hundred million pounds, is it? Or if you add everything together, all the bids, the towns fund, the...
Yeah, yeah, about ninety-four, something like that, yeah.
You know, personally, I would have preferred the government to give us ninety-four million pounds to Lincolnshire, not to the county council. And then we, for ninety-four million pounds, we, I think we'd have come up with something really transformational, working with all our partners. But that's not how the government's chosen to do it, so we'll work within the parameters of what they've given us. Thank you for that, Justin. So again, a report for noting and obviously the details of the bids will be made public once they are submitted in a fortnight's time. Thank you. Okay then, right, so that's one. So I think we now move on to the final item, which is just about the vision. Obviously, we've just had the county council elections and in the main, as we're, we're back to the similar state we were in before in terms of the political balance, more or less. So it's obviously a good result for the Conservative Party. So obviously our, we have a manifesto, so obviously we will then be delivering on that manifesto. It's a good read, so I recommend anybody who hasn't, hasn't yet to read it, does so. It is, it is challenging but deliverable, we think. And obviously we will be held to account on whether we deliver that. And basically it was around several themes, five or six themes really. Certainly about what we want to do for the future. Well-being was one of them and certainly working with families and using, working with the NHS, new schools and classrooms, modernising daycare services, supported housing. There's some, some firm commitments there. In transport, again, continuing the capital programme in terms of what transport we've got and there's some new things in there and obviously developing the, the recently granted funding for the North Highcom Relief Road, looking at supporting bus services and train services and, and also improving the, making sure our, our equipment, like with gritters and with, certainly with fire service as well, that we have a modern fleet. And also lobby for the A1 to be upgraded properly through Lincolnshire for six lanes instead of the situation we've got at the moment. Safety, obviously very important as well for the public. And again, there's, we were going to carry on with all sorts of work we're currently doing in terms of co-responding, supporting the Lincoln Medical School and various other trading standards and also local solutions with the NHS as well. So there's all sorts in there, a lot of equipments in there. On the economy, again, very important. We, as has been said, we've invested county council money into this as well. Broadband, we've got a challenging target now of eighty-five percent ultrafast gigabit broadband by twenty, by the next four years, which I'm told is deliverable, but it's something which will be transformational in terms of what we're doing. And we've invested, as we know, we've worked through the investment of the twelve million pounds and work with partners and keeping council tax as, as low as we can and supporting apprenticeships, the Humber side free port, we need to work with that as well. And the agricultural permission that councillor Davy is working as well. On the environment, again, again, we got a lot of positives interest on that from, from the public. And that's again, a challenging but deliberate target about of reducing our carbon emissions by sixty-eight percent by 2025. Again, unlike many other places, we actually deliver on our, our commitments. A lot of other places, the, the, there is rhetoric, but I'm afraid the delivery does not match the rhetoric. That is not the case with the county council. Obviously recycling, we're looking at rolling out the, the paper and cardboard waste across the whole county. Food waste is a commitment there. We still await government decisions as to what we do there. Reducing the council buildings because our new ways of working programme will reduce our council buildings by thirty percent over the next four years, again, a challenging target. The planting of three quarters of million trees, well, there is a plan, I'm told, so that is something we'll have to deliver. And also the ongoing issue of street light, of additional funding for coastal flooding. I mean, I think the other issue in terms of the broader issues is the, in terms of Greater Lincolnshire, we made a firm commitment that obviously we work with all partners, but we very much see the future of Greater Lincolnshire being of significant importance and making sure that Greater Lincolnshire is as an identifiable area on the national map so that we are recognised working with all the partners within Greater Lincolnshire, over a million, one and quarter million population nearly now. And I think something we will promote and continue to promote. Devolution remains an ambition and we don't know what that means in terms of what the government. I don't think personally at the moment the government is into much more local government organisation apart from the three areas. But we will continue to fight and lobby for genuine devolution to Greater Lincolnshire so that we can make more of these decisions on behalf of the residents we represent. And also working with things like Visit Lincoln, again councillor Davy's doing a lot of work there. And again, just championing our county and making the, the council as, as efficient and effective as possible. And I hope that over the next four years, we'll work with all councillors to do that, to continue that successful work. In terms of feedback, I mean, obviously no surprise to anybody. Number one issue by a mile in terms of what came back from the electors was potholes and roads. So again, we have put extra commitment funding in before the election to try and maintain our highways as best we can. And I think there is a commitment, there has been a verbal commitment. They will again look at how we can in this year put more money into the highway network to actually try and keep on top of it, following the, the, the harlow winter we had this year. Obviously, we do need to lobby government as well and there was a big disappointment that they removed twelve million pounds from our highways budget before the election. We managed to replace that because we have a robust financial situation, but we can't do that continually. So I think there is a lobbying exercise there to make sure that in future years, that, that money is restored so we can not only just keep pace with fixing the roads, we try and get ahead of the, the curve. And the other one, which, the number two item was fly tipping, which came up quite a lot. This is a new one, we don't normally have this one, so there's obviously an issue. Certainly at the start of the campaign, there was certainly on people's minds that there seemed to be an issue there, which is why I've, I've asked councillor McNally to look at some proposals where we can come up with something to support those people, as we've said previously. So I'm very much looking forward to the next four years and I'm sure they'll be challenging as ever and hopefully not as challenging as the last eighteen months, which was, has been very interesting, shall we say the least, and has been very challenging for all of us. But hopefully, as we sit here in our first in-person executive meeting for nearly over eighteen months, we look forward to the future and working with you all. So unless anybody has got any further comments on that, I'll pause there. Good, very good. Well, that's just a summary and obviously as we work forward, our manifesto will be worked through in terms of, of the workings of the, and the ambition of the council. And obviously I'm sure that other stuff will come to the fore as we move forward and there'll be other challenges and other opportunities as we look forward. So thank you for that. So with that, I think we've entered, reached the end of the meeting. We haven't reached the, oh no, we have outside bodies. Sorry, I forgot that outside body. I have circulated, we have lots of outside bodies at the council. Some are done by the council, the whole council, which we did a week last Friday. There are some appointments by the executive. So I've circulated the list, the proposed list. I'm not going to read them all out for the proposed list of outside bodies. There are one or two, or at least one, or I think opposition, I think Nigel. So we put the Conservative proposals forward, certainly, certainly for the CCN and the LGA. For example, I think we need some opposition nominations, but I will have to be, I take, we can submit these as the Conservative and the, the opposition wants for the executive appointments will have to be done because we have no, there hasn't been chance yet, Nigel, for the opposition to put forward names, has there?
No, leader, there is a group leaders meeting tomorrow and I, I recommend that, that executive delegate to yourself as leader of the council to put the names to those.
Okay, that's, I think that, so this is the, the, the working list and there are also other. The leader also has loads, there's lots of other outside bodies which the leader can appoint and there are even more outside bodies which the portfolio holders can appoint. So I think at the group leaders tomorrow, we'll, we'll just submit them and see if we can get, get some consensus. It will be quite difficult because with having three, four groups now, four opposition groups, they will also have to try and agree amongst themselves. So we'll, we'll do that, but this is the working list and with the odd amendment is what the proposal will be. Okay, is that agreed? So delegate to me on the basis that what we've seen so far. So is that it, Debbie? Am I now right? Yes, well, with that, it just falls to me to thank you all for your attendance at this meeting and look forward to your endeavours and contribution over the next four years. Thank you, and I close the meeting.